I'd like to invite Pastor John Robinson up for the invocation. If you'll join us in that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Praise to the Lord with God his most holy infinite Father, our soon coming King, who we are once no time again hung in ourselves before thee, knowing only the praise that we can seek refuge beneath the shadows of thine holy hand. O heaven and father, thou art that give us the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding that we are to lead and stand forward and be the guide that we lead and our leaders to this day, O heaven and father. O heaven and father, thou art that give each and every one for coming out this afternoon to share this activity that's about to occur here in this building, O Lord. Father God, thou art that give each and every one for standing boldly to stand up for the righteous, for justice and equality by the laws, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Item two on the agenda, Valdosta City Council regular meeting. The council has had times to review the minutes from the July 8th regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions, council? Hearing none, seeing none, it is approved by acclamation. Item three, we'll move on to public hearings. Item A, public hearing for onsite solidification of non-hazardous waste by Georgia Petroleum. No action will be taken tonight. Tim Tanner, our city attorney, will present.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Like you just said, no action is required on behalf of the city. All we're required to do is to conduct a public hearing essentially for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Georgia Petroleum has requested the EPD to allow it to solidify non-hazardous waste, pursue it to Georgia Solid Waste Management Rule 3091-3-4-03, subsection four. We're required to hold a public hearing. Again, no action is taken by the city. And I would suggest we just say whoever's here for it, whoever's here against it.
Thank you, Tim. Again, it is a public hearing, so with that being said, would anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Jason Crosby. I'm the general manager of Georgia Petroleum. Like you said, we've applied to the EPD to install a solidification pit of non-hazardous waste at our site here in Lowndes County, Valdosta, so that we can do our own solidification processing. Currently, we do this, the landfill here in Lowndes County does this for us. We believe that by putting in this process at our facility, it'll allow us to be more independent and assure that we have continued growth here in Lowndes County. Again, we don't handle any hazardous waste, strictly non-hazardous waters and sludges. So.
Counsel, any questions for Jason? Jason, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this request? Seeing none, hearing none, we now have that for public record. Again, no action will be taken. The EPD will decide this, this item. Item B, consideration of a request to change the name of Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard. Pat Collins, our city engineer, will present. How about?
Hey, good evening. So, in March of 2021, Mr. DJ Davis visited the engineering department with a request to go over the ordinance requirements for changing the name of Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard. At the meeting, Mr. Davis was provided with the following details of the procedure, the timeline for submittals, the reviews, and advertising. He's also provided a map and a spreadsheet listing of the abutting parcels with owners' names and addresses, and a document with photos of each developed parcels listed by address. The total number of non-city-owned parcels abutting in Forest Street within the city limits is 279 parcels. That's the minimum 60% requirement in the ordinance for advancing the petition to the mayor and council for consideration. It's 168 signatures. Attached is a parcel map in your petition, and staff certified 172 signatures. Therefore, the petition has exceeded the 60% signature requirement by ordinance. All names were verified using property records, the customer server database, or contacting by phone those that signed the petition. As required by ordinance, a public notice was run in Valdosta daily time on June 25th and on July 2nd to advertise the subject of this street name renaming and to provide the hearing time and date as of this evening at 5:30. So with that information, I'll also add that Mr. Davis continuously, he worked with staff throughout the petition process and was very helpful in helping us through the signature verification process. So with that, I'll leave it with mayor and city council for their review and consideration.
Counsel, any questions for Pat? Pat, will you stay up to the, stay up at the microphone? Counsel, any questions? None for you? I'm sorry. All right. This is a public hearing, not a traditional one as in a zoning public hearing. The maximum time for both sides to speak either for or against is 15 minutes. You can have one person as the spokesperson for the group and use the entire 15 minutes, or you can have several speak during that same timeframe. With that being said, is there anybody that would like to speak for this request? Please state your name.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is DJ Davis. I am the former president of Valdosta State University's Action Club, which is a sociology club, a chance to initiate opportunities now. Good evening, Mayor Matheson, members of the council, and fellow Valdostans. Thank you for this time to share our hope for the future. We are not here today to dwell on the past, but rather focus on how we can reconcile and recognize our shared history together as a community in South Georgia. To quote Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., "Our goal is to create a beloved community, and this will require a qualitative change in our souls as well as a quantitative change in our lives." We bring before you today the signatures of 172 of the residents, homeowners, and businesses of Forest Street who supported the initiative to rename the name to Barack Obama Boulevard. An overwhelming majority of businesses that touched the street signed this petition. Changing the name of Forest Street will put to rest a long time unresolvable concern with how it is spelled or for who it is named. Doing so will give the street a presence of strength, history, and a forward-looking hope for a just, peaceful, and diverse Valdosta community. It is a quiet street. It is populated with business owners and the black men and women who helped build the city of Valdosta. They work hard at the cooking factory and at Levi's. They were servants in households and held other jobs throughout the community. When they retired, they came to live in peace on the street as citizens who shared a unique history. Remaining this street is a testament to the contributions of black citizens in Valdosta. It will give elders a sense of pride and peace as well as hope for the future of their children and our community as we work together to continue to build and strengthen the city without limits, as a model for others to follow and admire. Naming the street after a role model like President Obama is particularly important at this moment in history when diversity, inclusiveness are at the forefront of who we are as Americans. It is a reminder to young black, white, and brown men and women who are growing up in our community that they, like Obama, can come from a single, simple beginning and with commitment and perseverance achieve great things. They too can bring about Reverend King's call for a qualitative change in our souls and as well as the quantitative, let me say that again, the quantitative change in our lives to make Valdosta a better place for us all. The cost to residents is nominal. Anyone can change their address for free if they go to the post office in person or they can pay a dollar online. That's it, one dollar. We called media com and other utilities to confirm that they did not charge for changing the address. We also already succeeded at fundraising the money to cover the street cities, the cities' costs to change the street signs. Finally, I invited driver examiner Janissa Nguyen from the local Department of Motor Vehicles to address the concerns about driver's license. Is Ms. Nguyen available? Ms. Nguyen has a newborn that's two months old, so we do understand in her absence. So with the driver's license, all they would have to do is go up to the driver's license office and change their address. It is free. However, the second time, no matter if it's 60 or 1,000 times you can change the address and number, it's only $5. Okay? So ladies and gentlemen, the renaming of Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard would be a crucial step towards achieving the vision of a beloved community in Valdosta. We urge you to pass the ordinance today as a symbol of our community's commitment to move forward into a united, diverse, and peaceful coexistence. I now ask everyone in the room who is in favor of changing the name of Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard, please stand.
DJ, thank you very much.
I do apologize. We do have presently with us today a couple of resident residents that live on the street.
And DJ, I'm going to keep it open as a public hearing, so I'll ask if anybody else wants to come forward. Thank you very much. If there's anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so at this time. We did. Please state your name, Dr. Noel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Mike and Noel. I am living with my wonderful family at 2305 Glendale Drive. I'm going to keep this short. I'm here representing the Valdosta Coalition for Peace and Justice. And all the members of this particular coalition, we had a billboard up for quite some time also in Ashley, if you may recall, we are fully in favor of, of course, of changing the name to Barack Obama Boulevard, already written about this once or twice in the Valdosta Daily Times. And I do congratulate DJ on an awesome job with his presentation today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Dr. Susan Whaling, 2410 Georgia Avenue. And I just would really like you to pass this. It would be nice in the national news to see Valdosta in a positive light. I love the diversity here and the respect that everybody shows, whether you're a Viking or a Wildcat, and whether you're Republican or Democrat. I think this would be a great show to the nation, to the New York Times, or to whoever, that we are a kind and progressive and supportive community. So, thank you.
Dr. Whaling, thank you.
And I was so thrilled to hear this, and I'm all for it 100%. I thank Mr. Davis for doing this, but we have to. I thank you. I'm just really excited about it.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this Seeing none, I'll close that out at this time. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak against this request? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll close out that public comment portion and turn it over to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cody.
I am honored to make this motion that we change Forest Street to Barack Obama Boulevard. And it is my honor to make this motion, and I say thank you to every one of you, and especially to you, DJ. And to see 509, I mean Forest Street to get up, this is what I ask. Everybody that really live on Forest, would you please stand?
She represented well.
Okay, and she represented very well. DJ.
I want to hear that abus this street.
Okay, the ones that hear that abus this street, please stand. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Cody has a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard lots of seconds. I'll recognize Councilman Howard, this is the second. I'll open it up for comment from the, from the council.
Mayor.
Councilman Gibbs.
I want to share some information that I have shared with Councilman Howard and Councilman Vickers and Councilman Carroll. Also spoke to DJ about it the other day as well. I mean, I met and first and spoke about it, had a good conversation. He said he was going to share this information with Kiki. I don't know if he actually shared it or not with Kiki, but he said he was. Take it from your expression, he did it. I'd like to basically start off by saying that, do we have any members in the audience that are connected to First Indiana Baptist Church here in Valdosta? Any members of them?
You got one with her hand up over the air.
All right, so the guy that I'm about to talk about, the great African-American community leader Reverend Albert Forrest should touch some of y'all's thoughts. It should mean a lot to y'all. And Reverend Albert Forrest was born in 1837. He died in 1922. His wife, Louise, born in 1838, died in 1900. His daughter, Haggie Forrest, who was an educator here in Valdosta, was born in 1867 and died in 1959. They were all three buried and still are to this day at Sunset Bill Simmons. Let me give you a little history about Reverend Albert Forrest, since a lot of y'all may know it, and I bet we do know it, because this is something that, you know, when this was brought up a few years ago, it made me do a lot of research and a lot of decision or a lot of digging and sense of where we're at. And I'm just simply bringing this information out. It may not change the outcome of tonight, but what I want to bring up to y'all is that there is a great man who had a great legacy that his legacy continues. Reverend Albert Forrest was appointed missionary for the Thomasville Association in 1874. He recorded travel of 440 miles, preaching 16 sermons, baptizing three converts, attending three prayer meetings, married a sick, all this during a time that was very terrible times, during quarrel times. But despite those times, he decided that his life meant reaching out and making an He went on to write an article in Valdosta Times that was whitetracked by basically Amanda Usher, the man of mystery, getting to know Albert Forrest. And I quote, Deacon Harry Jenkins says that he disagrees with the people who claim the street did not have been named for a black man during 1800s in the South. I don't agree with that. I don't. Ain't no way a black man can have that kind of clout. And I say yes, it could be if his dad was supposed to be a good man. And everyone knows that his son was a good man. Albert Forrest was a shingle supplier for Valdosta Institute. According to the archives of Lowndes County, as I said before, he dwelled on Oak Street. He lived at 233 Oak Street, which is next door to where the church was built. His brother was the brick mason at church. His brother was actually the one who painted brick in the church. His daughter was secretary at church. He moved the church from 1840 in Truville when it shut down to over to Valdosta, where a storm took it out, to where they turned it around and rebuilt it again in 1868 by Michael S. I say all that to say, he was an advocate of this community. He did a lot for this community. And I know, I know some, some people feel that the street could not be named after him. And as I shared with DJ, it wasn't until 1977, August, is when the name went from one R in Forrest to two Rs. Even, even if you go back and research and you go back and you look, you'll find the articles on that. You'll find that he was a farmer. You will find that, that, you know, we've got inspection report. You see it? 1969 inspection report, no forest with one R. 1970, DJ saw this, he can attest to it. But I'm not giving you any information that's not here, all back in 1970. Here's a map, August of 1977. Dr. Noel can even attest to it in his article, not seeing the forest or the trees. He even says in his article, as a yard, "I have natural family for maps, the 19th century sample of maps, 1911, 1990, all the way up to 1940 newest census, it was spelled one R." And I went on to take it a little bit further to find that it was only spelled one R until August of 1977. He then goes on to say at the end, he goes on to say, well, I could say.
Quiet.
It's not true.
Quiet.
So he goes on to give three options in his article, and I agree with his second option. And in his second option, he says to accept and honor Albert Forrest and make a declaration to confirm this historical aspect. What I'm saying is that at the end of this, and I'll close my remarks, and as I said before, it may not change anything. But what I'm saying is that we have an opportunity, and I've talked to the mayor about this, and I've talked to the city manager Mark Earl about this, and we have a opportunity to put bronze plaques, I ran this by House of Ohio Victory, to put bronze plaques, I told DJ, at both ends of wherever that city's caused, do a proclamation to set the stone, to make sure that we uphold Albert Forrest's legacy, his family's legacy, his church. And all I'm saying is that I'm giving you the facts, I'm giving you the information, I'm giving you everything that you can find, everything you can see. And at the end of the day, all I can do is simply say, council members, I'd like to make a motion to table the renaming of Forest Street, that the citizens of our great community, the citizens in this room, and my fellow council members can take the information that I have shared, decide what's the best route for renaming Forest Street. We owe this to the great legacy of Reverend Albert Forrest, his family, and his church members.
Counselman.
There's a motion on the floor.
No, 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 stop, stop. Everybody was respectful during the course of the presentation. Please be as well. Any other council comments at this time?
What I was saying, there's a motion on the floor already.
We got it, but now there's one to be introduced if that one doesn't pass, but that, I think we all know. Any other council comments? We're only, we're only acting on one right now, correct?
Is it a motion to postpone to a definite time? Do you have a definite time?
Postpone until the people, Trump, you know, DJ and their group decide that they might want to change. And the thing is, I told DJ about it, and I know y'all, y'all worked really hard to raise the funds. And y'all worked really hard, and I know that y'all would like to change as well. And I understand that.
Counselman Gibbs, Matt Skye?
Actually.
No, but let me.
We can, DJ.
It won't take long.
Please sit down, sir. Please sit down. DJ, sit down. It's going well, DJ.
But I'm just saying, hey, until you'll need to put a, you need to put a definite time.
I would say for the attention, I mean, I would say probably two weeks to the next date of our meeting.
Thank you, counsel. Any other council comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what Councilman Gibbs has brought forth. It's unfortunate that we did not all have that information before this meeting. That being said, what is before us, every I has been dotted and every T has been crossed. We have approved the renaming of many streets in honor and in memory of many people, local and otherwise. And because of that, the due diligence has been done, and I would like to call for the question.
Counselman, thank you.
There has been a second, I want the nation to second that motion, there's a second.
We have a second on the initial motion.
No, you're talking about the initial one or the one that Andy made?
The county.
All right. Just in case, and sorry, Councilman Gibbs, for not doing that procedurally. Can I get a second for his motion to delay? Hearing no second, we will proceed. Any other council comments at this time? Councilman Howard.
I'd like to thank Councilman Gibbs for giving us a reason now to name Oak Street after Mr. Forrest. Reason why I say that is Mr. Forrest, if everything you said is, is true, he lived on Oak Street. So that would be a perfect opportunity to name that street after Mr. Forrest. But Forest Street already has a name that the petitioners went out to get changed. Who is named after at this point in time is irrelevant to what, what our discussion is. The time to do the research and change the name or give the petitioners an opportunity would have been years ago when they brought it before council. So my only thing is, I would like to ask council and the mayor what we can do after we vote on this. We can make a lot of this a lot simpler for us. We can change our ordinance, where we can say no street, no building, no alley, no anything in the city of Valdosta would be named after any terrorist, foreign or domestic, any Nazi sympathizer, any, any Holocaust denier, anything like that. We can, we can make that change in our ordinance, just like that. So therefore, if, if we had a street that came up or a building that came up, it won't, it won't even be an issue. We have an opportunity right here in the South to let people know. We're not the same as other cities, other states. To name a street right now after President Obama, it would mean a lot to the same people that have been marginalized in this city for so long and, and throughout this nation. You think about the people who lived on that street, who before, and I haven't been in Valdosta all my life, but I've been in Valdosta a while. Black people weren't even allowed, didn't even live on that street. So now they live on that street, and just the suggestion of saying that a street in 1800s to 1922 is what you said, Mr. Forrest said, from 1837 to 1922. We know black people still getting hung and killed as early as the eight, late as the eighties in, in this, in the United States. So for me to believe that happened, I'm not saying it isn't, but it's just hard for me to believe. So what we can do, we have, we have, we have an opportunity here to vote on, on the issues that DJ brought up and set an example. We're a hub city. All these smaller cities around us, they may look at it and say, Valdosta can do it, why can't we? So I'm gonna go ahead and go ahead with Councilman Noel and Councilman Cody and say, let's go ahead and vote and right this wrong.
Counsel, any other comments from council?
I just want to say that, thank you for your work, but I lived on Cypress and Forrest. But I lived on Cypress and Forrest. I, we moved there in 1970 and my kids could not play with kids on Forrest. They could only go so far because the white people that lived there didn't allow the black kids even come in the yard. We had a grocery store that was called Colonial Store where the Salvation Army is there. We couldn't even, we didn't have cars. We had to push our buggies. When we got in front of those houses, we had to push real fast because the Caucasian ladies was sitting on the porch and they would say, "Here come them little children coming down the street." I had to walk my children down that street. So for this street to be named, it makes me feel more dignified because I know what was on Forrest Street into that area. From the sixteen, from 1969 and to now, I was in that area. When he said crackling good, I was in that area. When he said Levi Strauss, I was in that area. And my kids had, at, at one point, we couldn't, and my kids couldn't even ride the bus to school. They had to walk because they re-outlined it so the kids couldn't ride. I had to pay a taxi for my children to commute to school. Been there, did that, got a T-shirt for it.
Any other council comment? Uh, DJ, I got one quick comment and a humble request. It was a very impressive effort to get those signatures to, to get out and make a change. A humble request that you stay, uh, stay with those people on that street, help guide them in the, in the change so that people do not, they get denied checks, get denied, the forms that they need annually to, to keep anything coming. Please, I just lived it two and a half years ago moving from the 18th North Patterson Street, taking my business out to 2325 US Highway 84 East. That simple move almost cost me my business. So please, organize an effort when school gets back in to assist those people on that street, and this is successful here in just a second.
I have a humble request.
I'll talk to you right after we take a vote about that. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for a vote. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition? Close and carry. Without reason, I'll allow the dissection. Congratulations, PJ. We'll move on to the new citizens to be heard. As a portion of the meeting, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have a time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is the council's policy to immediately follow up with you and your concerns. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group that will ensure that all others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens that we wish to be heard at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address. And we'll pull that microphone down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Earlene Deans. I live at 14 Pine Dell Circle. I have lived in Valdosta for 31 years. In the time that I have lived in Valdosta, my cul-de-sac has not been paved. Um, it's been patched. Um, there's a spot that's in front of my area where they said that it is not deep enough for them to patch it or fill it in. So I've come to ask you if you all would put it in your, um, meeting or agenda for this, uh, particular area to be, uh, repaved. I have all of the signatures of my neighbors that live there, and this is me and maybe three other ones that has lived there the longest. Um, my neighbor next door has lived there for 30 years. I've lived for 31, and then there's maybe one that lived there for maybe 25 years. But the rest of them have not. So I've just come to bring this forward to the council members.
Thank you very much for doing so. We'll talk to you immediately after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
The distinguished gentleman in the right here right there will.
Okay, thank you so much.
Give us your, give us that address again.
It is 14 Pine Dell Circle here in Valdosta, the city limits. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard at this time?
Yes, I'm gonna come in and piggyback on what Ms. Dean said. I am a, uh,
I'm sorry, please, your name?
My name is Wanda Bennett, Wanda Yvette Bennett. And I'm a resident that had, uh, just become here in December of 2020, and I'm a homeowner at 4 Pine Dell Circle in the same vicinity where my neighbor lives. And she had brought it to my attention. She has been in the area. She said she's one of the pioneer neighbors there, and I just came on board. I am concerned as a taxpayer and a homeowner in the area that this issue is taken care of, and if there's any type of way that funds can be allocated to, to get this taken care of, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. And I also would like to say something else. It's not pertaining to that, but there's another issue I would like to just bring up if I can.
Please do one.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm very concerned, um, about the mentally ill that, um, patrol the areas of Valdosta. Uh, I see a gentleman that walks up and down Venus Road. He's a black gentleman. I don't know who he is. I call him a gentleman because I'm trying to be respectful. Uh, he appears to be mentally ill and he walks up and down. He has a, a T-shirt on. Uh, it's, it's poor hygiene. Um, what, what is being addressed here for the mentally ill here? Uh, he needs, he needs hygiene. He needs his hygiene to be taken care of. Is there a place where they can be taken to, uh, to be, you know, for, for services to, to help people like that?
Wanda, I'll follow up with you after the meeting with a contact. They do great outreach. I'll make sure you have that number.
Okay, exa- I mean, I just have one question, Your Honor. Um, are they able to go out and actually address that individual without scaring that individual to be able to help him?
They sure can. They're very compassionate in what they do, and if they can't handle it through the mental illness and they refer it to a legacy, a legacy referred to an officer. A lot of times our officers are incredibly compassionate with, with, they'll go out in plain clothes so that they don't scare
Right.
the gentleman. So, yeah, it's a great, it's a great effort. Sometimes we can help, sometimes we can't.
Okay, well, I hope so. I hope that he can be helped.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time? Please state your name and address.
Willa Rayford. I reside at 1200 Lake Park Road. I've been there over 50 years. I'm planning on dying now. So I came out tonight and seriously matters while I was out on vacation. The city came and dig up in front of my house. Um, just dig up the dirt and the ditch. Instead of doing it properly, it's a matter of digging all up and lifting it, and it looks real, real bad in front of my house. Instead of putting pipes or doing it right, I guess the idea was to let the water go by. I put, do it right, so they just made it real, real bad. I'm real upset about it. I'd like for you and the mayor of the city council looking to it and put it back to where it was before, for a lifetime, if you will.
If you don't stay off the meeting, somebody will come up and press that with you.
All right, that's one issue.
Got it.
I'm gonna be short. The second issue before I get on the soap is that we are concerned about the positions here in the city of Valdosta with black folks. Uh, system, we can ask for assistant black city manager, assistant black fire chief, your assistant black police officer. I'm just throwing it out tonight. There will be some more correspondence about this. Why can't we look at giving some of those individuals who qualify some of those positions?
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm John Robinson, 327 San Jean Circle, 8 Park, and also an associate pastor for San El Missionary Baptist Church. Um, congratulations for changing the name and all the hard work that everyone done changed the name. So let's do something else that the historic acts that we worked together on the incubator process that, the presentation that we come in and made before, and we should consider that and consider us moving ahead and working diligently to bring some changes to Valdosta. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to be heard?
George of Austin Rhymes, 5004 Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I too would like to thank y'all for changing the name of Forest Street. And I want to commend the Councilman Gibbs for exercising his rights under our constitution and the law that are in, laws that are in place. He have a right to do that, and I appreciate him for that. As a retired military veteran of over 20 years, I would like for this to be recorded in the minutes to make, to substantuate this truth for generations to come. I have heard the city manager say that no part of the ordinance was changed about renaming streets. I bear witness tonight that he's 100% wrong. The ordinance was changed. I have own video. And we have other documentation to show that the ordinance that was changed is extremely lower than the ordinance that was. I have that document. And I will stand before Jesus, Moses, and Muhammad to show that I speak the truth tonight. So let the historic archive of America expand that the minister rose and the people tribunal went out to do what the old ordinance required of it. We are not a crazy people. And I just want the truth to be maintained. That's why I have this on video just in case. Because we know too often, the news media don't see us. We see liberals. But Matthew, or St. John, rather, 8 Thetra 2 says, "And you shall know the truth and that the truth will set you free." And I thank God for the freedoms in this nation today. Because like you black and white people did today, others that came this way, they believed in what was right, what was just, and what God approved of. Paul to the Galatians said, "For God is not mocked; for whatsoever a man sows, that shall he also reap." So we are noticing the fulfillment of the divine prophecy. Now let that be recorded in the records. Thank you.
George, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Catherine Ammons, our deputy city manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Valdosta Fire and Police Departments will be hosting their annual Battle of the Badges Blood Drive on Wednesday, July 28th, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM in the City Hall Annex Multipurpose Room located at 300 North Lee Street. City employees, retirees, their families and friends, as well as members of the general public are invited to give the gift of life at this event. The American Red Cross continues to experience a severe blood shortage that is negatively affecting blood product availability across the country and in Lowndes County. Donors of all blood types, especially type O, and those given platelets are urged to make an appointment. Please go to the redcrossblood.org. And just a quick update on our four employees, um, that were injured last Monday. Um, our four first responders, two still remain hospitalized, but one that was previously released had surgery today and he is doing very well. He will stay overnight and he will hopefully be released again in the morning. Our VPD officer is recovering at home, and we especially want to give thanks to the community for all the support received over the past week and a half. It has been extremely grateful and humbling. The fund was, that was set up at Guardian Bank to benefit the four individuals as of this morning was at $30,000. Have a sign.
Catherine, thank you. We'll move on to council comments. If council doesn't mind, I'll lead with a couple of quick points. Just a word of caution. Uh, my report that I received this morning, there have been 92 new cases of COVID-19 in Lowndes County in just the last seven days. Please continue to be cautious and courteous to those around you. I think we're seeing the, uh, end results of holiday travel now that the world has opened up this summer. Um, there's also a ribbon cutting underway right now. We're gonna miss the actual cutting, but the celebration goes on till 7:30 for the Self Eat Museum at the corner of, uh, excuse me, on 124 North Patterson Street. I'm sure these ladies would love you to drop by and show your support. I think it goes on till 7:30. And finally, this Sunday at 4:00, we're gonna say our earthly goodbyes to former councilman and mayor pro town Willie T. Head June. The service will be at Union Cathedral Church on East Hill Avenue. And it truly was a wonderful life of service in defense of this country and in service to this community as well. So I wanted to recognize that fact. Counsel, any other council comments?
Sir, I would like to say also, uh, to everyone, our hearts are heavy because Mr. Head was a, was a great leader in the city of Valdosta slash Lowndes County. I also want to salute our chief of the fire department and our chief of the police department when our officers were injured, how they rallied as a family. And to see the support that came out that evening when this happened and to see how the chief, both of those chiefs stood there and greeted those families. And to see this little girl that was six years old say, "I want my daddy", that brought so many tears to my eye. And again, those that prayed for our work, our workers, our firemen's and our police department young men, continue to pray for those young men because they do so much for us. And when one hurt, all of us hurt because we are connected to the head. We are connected to the arm. And again, we should applaud our chiefs because they was there and they did a tremendous job of supporting Also, I attend GMA meetings and to agree with what our mayor said, we got to be very careful here in Valdosta slash Lowndes County with this virus. Uh, we, at, at this time in the state of Georgia, with 70% of deaths and this rise in daily. And also, mayor, city managers, we got to make sure all our nine, our EMS and 911 employees are vaccinated. Because if they are not vaccinated and they get COVID and they got to be at home, who's gonna manage the system? So we got to reach out, and that's one of the things that GMA is asking, that we make sure all of our EMS and our 911 operators have taken their vaccines. Because without them, our city will hurt. And we also got to realize that Jacksonville, Alabama, and going toward Waycross, we are connected, and that area is booming with this virus. And young people, grandparents, aunties, cousins, whoever, if you've got young people, 18 years old, 16, please take and be vaccinated because they, they are the one that is affecting our seniors. And our seniors are catching it from our young people. And also, GMA stated, you can be, have taken the vaccine and you still can take, get COVID with this, that this Delta virus that's going around now. I'm not here to batter anyone here. I'm pleading that we all reach out to our community. And I'm gonna reach in my community when I say, our African-Americans, we are at higher risk because we have diabetes. risk, because we have diabetes, we are overweight, and all, we have high blood pressure and everything that goes around in our families. And if we don't protect each other, and if we don't talk about this daily to save our own, we are at fault. We can't point fingers at anyone, we are at fault. I'm not, again, I just want to say thank you for what we're doing, and continue to make sure that we're covered by getting these vaccines taken. GMA is pushing that on my back, because I'm on the board, and I'm pleading with our pastors, our community leaders, DJ, and et cetera, to help us get these young people vaccinated in our, in the city of Valdosta. Thank you.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Oh, one more thing, and let's thank our health workers, because they are the one that's taking care of us. And if you, like we tell our, our Moody Air Force guys and our military people, thank you for serving. When you see our health workers, tell them thank you for serving. If they in line, and you can afford to buy them a cup of coffee, buy them a cup of coffee, because those people are working hard to take care of us. Thank you. I'll shut up. Thank you.
Any other council comments at this time?
Hey, one, Mayor.
Thank you.
I know we got, we've seen a lot of outreach for our firemen and police officers who were hurt, so I just want to make sure that if anyone who can, if you can give, send a word of encouragement, a letter, an email, a text, or anyone, if you know someone, y'all please see if we can help give, because these, I mean, this is not, these-
Small, so I think we're going to be dealing with them for a long time. Also, if, Councilwoman-
Where, where, where would you use the donation to? Guardian Bank.
As we look on my pay tax, we're looking for some kind of stuff. Also, they can open up everyone, as soon as we, we, the last everyone ended up shutting down. 95% of the people who were being made bid are being made under the Delta virus, and they're younger people, they're not older people. 95% of the dead are the Delta virus, Delta virus. So we want to make sure we take that step. I want to thank DJ and his group, showing this group the nasty, and we'll do our best to give you what you thought was right. Also, I want to thank the council for voting the way that they did, and also want to ask y'all one other question. Think about it. Prior to the Georgia flag being changed, laws, laws, every, that we want to practice, now all faces finally on the Georgia flag. As council, we have definitely, we can show people we have definitely loved, we can teach them, they should, all of them, that we want to love, where we need to change themselves to be able to handle.
Councilman, there's one out front, and there's one in my office.
I was just talking about you. If you didn't see me that often, and this-
We handle our business, and I would encourage them along with you to, to answer theirs, you're correct. Council, any other council comments at this time?
I got one more. Stand, please.
Are you gonna do this to her? Taylor Marzelle.
This is our, one of our, who? She is so special to me, and she's going to be leaving us, and this is her last council meeting, uh, so as you go out, so, thank you.
Please remain standing. Councilwoman Cody, thank you. Councilwoman Cody, thank you. All in favor, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You got a second? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, everybody.